We'd like to say a big thank you to our teachers as it's Teacher Recognition Week and we appreciate all that you do for the kids in Roseville. Next, on approval of the minutes of the April 18th meeting, in a motion please.
Scott will make a motion to accept the minutes.
Support McCartney.
On favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Now we have some nice things happening and I think I want to turn it over to Mr. Blaskowski. Maybe?
Jen?
Jen, is the other one right?
Yep. Right down here on the table.
Oh, I'm sorry.
President Obama.
Thanks for coming out today. We are going to be honoring our spelling bee winners today. Each year we have a spelling bee competition, fifth through eighth grade, and today we have the special winners with some tough words. We're going to call up the principal of the building to come on up and introduce their winner from their building. So we're going to start out with Mr. Stackad Dort. Why don't you come on up?
When we call people to stand up, we should prepare the individuals with you tonight, okay? Whoever came with you.
I'm Donovan Stack. I'm principal at Dort Elementary School. Our spelling bee winner is here today. It's Faith Scosiles. Come on up. Faith's winning word was polemic. Would you like to introduce your parents?
My parents are back there, my mom and dad.
Put your name in there. Thank you very much for being a winner, okay?
Congratulations. You're not getting away that easy.
I tried.
You need to be framed.
Jesus.
The word polemic, I had to look it up. It was, it's a noun and it has to do with some, some...
You can use it in a sentence.
I can't even use it in a sentence. It's so weird. It's like, nobody would ever use this word, so it's amazing she could spell it. So, anyway. Next comes Fountain. Mr. Johnson is not here today. He got sick, so I'll fill in for him today. So if we could have Starr Arnett come on up, if she's here. There she is.
Who have you with tonight, today?
I'm with my grandma.
Grandma, in the back. We have a book for you with your name in it and a certificate. What word did you have?
Electrode.
You want to spell it?
I can.
Okay, go ahead.
E-L-E-C-T-R-O-D-E.
Huron Park's winner was Zachary Asmark. Come on up, Zach. You got that speech ready? Tell us here.
I'm with my aunt and uncle, my brother and sister.
And who was the name?
Absurd.
Scholar?
A-B-S-U-R-D.
Good job. For that, you get a certificate and a book.
You've got to get your picture taken.
Photo.
I'm Teresa Tamal. I'm the principal at Kaiser. This is Anthony Spagnola. He was our spelling bee winner. Anthony represents himself in a way that makes me very proud. He's one of our Project Challenge students. They just took a trip to Chicago and every day when he was walking through the hall, he's a great example of what I hope we all strive to be. Thank you. Who'd you bring with you tonight, Anthony?
My mom. I brought my mom and dad.
And his winning word was?
Evaporate.
Do you want to spell it? Okay.
E-V-A-P-O-R-A-T-E.
Okay, great job. Thank you.
Please come on up. Our winner this year was Grace Patterson, and Grace really exemplifies what we hope our students should be. I'm sure like everyone else, she has a fantastic support system, great family, she follows the rules, she's hardworking, and has the drive really needed to be successful. So congratulations. Who's with you?
My mom and dad.
Okay, and what was your winning word?
Phrasing.
Phrasing, can you spell it?
P-H-R-A-S-I-N-G.
Great, yeah, we had narrowed it down to two, so...
Good evening. My name's Jeanne Williams. I'm the principal at Patton Elementary, and I'd like to introduce Paige Gwynn as our spelling bee winner at Patton. Paige, who did you bring with you?
My mom and my brother.
And what was that special word?
Warning.
Could you spell it?
W-A-R-N-I-N-G.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
I just noticed the name of this book, "I Killed a Mockingbird." Ooh. Good book.
Classic.
There you go, honey, thanks. Put your tape.
Good evening, everybody. I'd like to invite Neveah Dirksen up. Neveah does a wonderful job as well. Mom volunteers in the building all the time. It's just, she's a sweet little girl and does a wonderful job for our school. So what was your winning word?
Platoon.
Can you spell it?
P-L-A-T-O-O-N.
Nice.
Apparently I'm filling in for Mr. Mickens. Nicholas DeGrande, is that how you say it? Is Nick here?
Yes.
Okay, we'll make sure that he gets it. Congratulations, Nick. By the way, his word was contentious.
No.
No. Don't take my shield away from me. And Roseville Middle School, Mr. Bettin.
Our spelling bee winner at Roseville Middle School was Destiny Williams. Destiny, come on up. Destiny was a model and example for students at Roseville Middle School. Straight A student, you know, so when I was looking at some of her grades and things today, I realized we probably need to work on some other letters of the alphabet with her, because while she can spell, she might only know the letter A based on her grades. But outstanding job. Destiny, what was your winning word?
Tongue.
Want to spell it?
T-O-N-G-E.
Correct. Destiny, who's with you tonight?
My dad and my sister.
Next, we're going to do our Teacher of the Year. And we have three of them this evening.
Yes, let's start with Jennifer Basil. Mr. Schumer, please come on up. Just a little explanation of how this works. Each year, each different level receives nominations of teachers that meet a certain criteria, and of those nominations, a committee meets together and chooses who that individual is. And so Jennifer today will be representing the Teacher of the Year for the elementary level. So congratulations, and Mr. Schumer will share some of his experience that he has with Jennifer at his building.
Well, boy, I could go on about Jennifer for hours, as many of you know, but really she exemplifies in not only what we would like our outstanding teachers to be, but she is the teacher that you want your kids in her classroom. She is absolutely phenomenal. We'll start off with the things that you can't teach. Her positivity, her demeanor, her calmness, her ability to coax the absolute best from her students, her ability to just, you know, she has those kids right where she wants them. And, you know, her student test scores show her effectiveness. She's the type of teacher that really, when you go in and expect to see something, she exceeds your expectations. As an administrator, you know, you have a tough time finding something for her to tweak when you suggest something, you know, a little out of the box or a little above and beyond or maybe something that we haven't even as a district quite, you know, gotten, you know, mastery of yet. Not only does she try it, but you go in the classroom the next time to observe her and she, she has it down. I mean, she has mastered it. She really is a building leader as well, very well-respected by all aspects of the Roseville community. She represents us as, I know our other two teachers do as well, in every facet, the way that Roseville Community Schools wants to be represented. She is truly an outstanding teacher, and I've seen a lot, and she's absolutely as good as they come. Congratulations.
I just wanted to say thank you. I brought my mom and dad tonight, my husband and my kids. Oh, my goodness. That was overwhelming. Thank you. I really appreciate it. I've been in the district a long time. I'm very, very happy here. I love the children, the parents, the teachers. I'm very honored to be here, and I just want you to know I do come to work every day, try my best. Boy, that's really, nice words you said about me, so thank you. My mom and dad are here, my husband, my children, and my closest friends are all here too. They came to support me tonight from my school, so thank you very much for being here. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Each one of the winners is also represented in our Teacher of the Year Hall of Fame out here. There are pictures up there as well as their name on a plaque. Their pictures are already out there, so on your way out, you're welcome to take a look at their fabulous photos that are out there. Next, we have Jennifer Getzinger from Middle School. And of course, Mr. Bettin as well.
I had to bring my notes because I had a lot I wanted to say and I didn't want to forget the things I wanted to say about Jennifer tonight. I want to start with, you know, she's just an outstanding teacher and more importantly, advocate for the children in their building who goes above and beyond every single day and an absolute pleasure to work with. Jennifer has the unique ability to take a subject that for many kids, math, is not always the most exciting and turn her classroom into an exciting, dynamic learning environment. Kids want to be in it. When they talk about Ms. Getzinger and they talk about her class, they do use words like exciting, we're doing activities, we're having fun, we're learning real-world things, and just making math relative to them and just so enjoyable. And you can see that, and you can see the passion for learning that she brings out in kids in the way that they want to interact with her and her interactions with them and just every aspect of her classroom. But beyond just being an outstanding classroom teacher, Jennifer is an outstanding leader in our building. She's one of the first people to jump in feet-first, you know, jump, go right into the deep end on any new initiative that we may have, whether it's cooperative grouping, differentiated instruction, using learning scales. I remember early in this year when we were doing some professional development on learning scales and talking about them, and I put something out to the staff about them. About 20 minutes later, I got a reply from Jen with this very detailed, you know, learning scale, just, hey, can you give me some feedback on this? How's this look? I was like, whoa, I don't know if I'm ready to reach this point yet, but she's well ahead of me. But not only that, you know, she's a leader for kids in the building. Jen runs our National Junior Honor Society and meets weekly with these kids, really pressing and pushing with them community engagement and then service learning and giving back beyond just in academics. She shows up at almost, I would say, probably not almost, every single event we have after school, whether it's a sporting event, a concert, an extravaganza after school. We know Ms. Getzinger is someone that we can rely on to have there and to support our kids. In addition to all that, she took on a huge role this year. We have at Roseville Middle over the past two years, 18 new staff members to our building that have come from other schools in the district or new hires, and we developed an induction program for them that's very much teacher-centered and teacher-driven. And on top of everything else she did, Jen took the lead in this and coordinating meetings and seeking feedback from these teachers and helping them learn what the culture of Roseville Middle is and become part of the family there, and we couldn't have had some of the success we've had without her. It's an absolute pleasure to work with her every day. Her advice, her words are things that I listen to and carry a lot of weight with me. I think she's very much deserving of this award, and I'm proud to stand next to her tonight as she's won it. Jen, congratulations, you deserve it.
I just wanted to say thank you very much for this. I've been fortunate enough to work in this district for a little over 10 years, and the parents, the kids, the school board, the administrators, the staff that I work with have just, they've allowed me to grow and change as a teacher. And it's funny that you bring up math in the real world, because I feel like this year I've really seen a lot more of kids kind of bringing that home, understanding that, you know, unit price can help them be a better consumer in the real world and stuff like that. I did, I did bring a lot of family members today, my mom and dad in the back, my grandma Carmen, and my Aunt Donna, worked in the district for many years, still does, can't get rid of her. And my Aunt Carol is also here today. Thank you very much.
Oh, one more.
Donna was taking a picture. Stop for Donna.
Ready? Thank you.
Next, we have our high school representative, Jeffrey Kane, and Mr. Headmark will come on up and say a few words.
We're going to need a milk crate, Teresa, both of us. Good evening. It's a pleasure to introduce Jeffrey Kane as the Roseville High School Outstanding Teacher of the Year. He has been many, many things and continues to be many, many things for Roseville High School. His connection with students is rivaled by none, his connection with staff, he is a school improvement chair, he's a school leader, he's a department chair, he represents all the elective classes in our steering committee process, he's a communicator. Each month, our teachers have what we call a common prep cohort where six, seven teachers that have prep on that hour give up their prep to meet with Mr. Kane and Mr. Loffe to discuss school issues, what we can do, ideas. He leads that group, and we've had some great ideas coming out of it. It's been really productive. He's also been a coach for us. Jeff has coached softball, basketball, and when duty called this year, Mr. Borsey knocked at his door and Jeff said, yes, I'll coach soccer too, as a favor to Mr. Borsey. He's got great connections with kids. The staff can see that, the staff sees that and respects it. A couple of examples of his connections with kids. Tonight, when he leaves this meeting, he'll be joining an alumni for dinner tonight, because he told all those kids that played basketball for him, when they graduate, he'll buy them dinner. And Robert Porter not only graduated tonight to have dinner with Mr. Kane, but Robert Porter also signed with the Chicago Bears as a free agent, and so he was on Jeff's basketball team. And that kind of connection with alumni and kids that go on. And now when Dom Pointer, who's playing for the Cleveland Cavaliers, when he's done, he's got to come back and he should buy you dinner if he's, if he's playing for the Cleveland Cavaliers. Jeff also coaches JV softball, and you watch just how he runs that program with firm, fair, and consistent discipline. That team operates smoothly like a finely-oiled machine. And probably the thing that he does the most that people notice and pay attention to is our marketing program. Jeff is our marketing teacher, which runs the school store, the spirit wear that they sell at all the elementaries, the homecoming event with all the sweatshirts and the, and the t-shirts and all the stuff to get kids all pumped up about the events. And so they not only handle product, they deal with the money. He runs the class like a little marketing firm where kids come with ideas, they take a risk, maybe they make money, sometimes they don't, and that's all part of the learning process. It's just been phenomenal, and we would have 300 kids in that class if we could fit them in the room. They all, they all want to be part of it. They work very hard to be in there, and as a business person, a business teacher, he's also experienced the business world, he brings those experiences back in to share with the kids. He's got a couple of his own ventures going on right now, and he laughs with the kids like when he had to send a cease and desist order to another company that was infringing on his copyright. That was something he could share with the kids, and whether or not it was successful, we'll find out, but those kinds of real-life experiences are wonderful. I watched Jeff grow as a teacher. I think he was in his second year when I joined him at Roseville High School. I've seen him get married, I've seen him become a parent, three beautiful children and a beautiful family, it just makes me wish my kids were still little. You're going to see Jeffrey Kane around here for a long time doing lots of great things because people like this don't stop, they just keep going. Congratulations, Jeff.
I brought Joe Janey and Tom Gustweiler with me here today. In all seriousness, it's meant a lot to a lot of my family members this award, so I do appreciate that, and most important, I do thank all the students for allowing me to be fair, as Mr. Headmark said, and honest with them and getting them to try to do their best. And there's been a lot of great teachers along the way and mentors for myself, but Mr. Headmark's really allowed me to do a lot of great things that I don't think many administrators would, because it puts headache on to him, so himself in the central administration. I greatly appreciate them giving me the ability to do my job and sometimes some crazy things, but it's really made a difference and greatly appreciate everyone in Roseville Community Schools.
So what do you do in your spare time?
Yeah, that's right. It's spare time. There's not much, but definitely the family.
Picture. You can stand up and stare at that. You want me to stand up here, too? Okay, before we get our recess, we're going to do just a couple of items real quickly. First, we have our comments from our Board of Education members, Mr. McCartney.
Spelling bee winners, congratulations. In fifth grade, I bombed out on the word recess. Why are there two S's at the end of recess? Teachers of the Year, good job. Congratulations. And happy birthday, Kevin Switnowski.
Congratulations to the spelling bee winners and their parents and the teachers, outstanding teachers, you do a fine job, we appreciate it and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Mr. D. Mr. D. Police?
I think they all said it. I'm happy to be associated with a town and district like this, with all the great people in it, and doing great jobs and kids doing so good. I'm really happy to be here, because all of you make it.
Mr. Swit.
Congratulations to the spelling bee winners and teachers who had the opportunity to attend the dinner and keep it up, and you guys do a great job. Thank you.
Congratulations to spelling bee winners. Just want you to know that over the years, I've never won anything in a spelling bee. I was always the first one to sit down, so... And congratulations to the teachers also.
For the young students out there, you never spell a word the way you pronounce it because it's wrong, because that guy back there said birthday instead of birthday, spelt it wrong, so that's why he didn't win. Sorry, Joe, I just... I'm sorry, that's just the best one. Mr. Coment.
Congratulations to all the students out there. I know the hard work that's involved in preparation for our spelling bee in the class or at the district level. Parents, I'm sure that your ability to spell has also increased when you drill the students on the words, so congratulations to you and thank you for the hard work. Teachers of the Year, congratulations. Your pictures will hang in the hall forever, and we, as employees of the school district, in some cases, in my case, envy your ability to be in the classroom and the success that you've been able to accomplish. Congratulations.
Congratulations to all those great spellers out there, never lose that skill, and, you know, spell check is great, but you should always know how to spell. Teachers of the Year, you have one of the toughest jobs these days. Teachers today have to work so much harder than they ever had before, and you show us how much you can learn and improve your craft. Thanks for dedicating your time to helping the kids here in Roseville. I really appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Scott?
Ditto to everybody up here, son.
It's hardly near the end, isn't it? I'm sorry. Ms. Basil?
Well, it's always a privilege to be surrounded by the best and the brightest in our district, and that's what it feels like tonight, and I certainly echo Mark's words about the teachers. And I want to take one point of personal privilege. Because Jennifer's grandmother happens to be one of my oldest and dearest friends, I have to confess that I remember the day she was born. So congratulations, Alan and Lynn, you did very well here.
You meant Jennifer, you meant Jennifer, not Carmen. Not Carmen. He's not my friend. We love you back.
Congratulations to all the winners. Thankfully, I wasn't around for anybody's birthday.
Oh, I bet you were. Yeah. Mr. Steelen?
Well, since everybody's being honest, I remember my word I lost out on was enjoy.
Well, since everybody's being honest, I remember my word I lost out on was enjoy. I am J-O-Y. I knew it was E and I just came out I. And it was embarrassing because I knew I had to walk around like this. It was terrible. Again, it's amazing how the spelling sticks with you and you learn from those mistakes. So continue to practice. Congratulations to all the teachers. You look great up on the wall.
Behind the desk in class. As anyone from the public wishes to be heard at this time, we have a public hearing now and one at the end of the meeting. If no one wants to come to the podium? No? I see you shaking your head. So I'll tell you what, we'll do a quick recess. We know some of you have to go home and study more spelling words, so we'll take a five-minute recess. Thank you, folks, for coming.
R-E-C-E-S-S.
Oh, good job.